Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of October 1st, 2018. Before I go through the agenda, I would like to say on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in the town, we'd like to extend our condolences to the family of Ronald Woolhouse who passed away. Ron was a longtime dedicated part-time firefighter in the town, and the family has our sympathies. Okay, public service announcements. Center of Hope Foundation is having a wine tasting and live auction at Point Breeze Restaurant, October 12th. Tickets are $50 per person at the door, $85 per couple if purchased by October 8th. You can contact Pauline Davis at (508) 764-4085 for tickets and more information. The Town of Sturbridge is still under a voluntary water ban. Nonessential outside watering use is not allowed, except that sprinklers may be used for lawn watering outside of the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. one day a week. The Council of Aging has invited department heads and caregivers, restaurant owners, managers, business owners, bank managers, and board members to a program on preparing for a dementia-friendly Sturbridge. The meeting is October 11th, 2018, 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center, second floor in the main hall. We also have from the Council of Aging an invitation for a family fun walk. Bring your family and join us for walking celebration. Sturbridge Council on Aging and Burgess Elementary are joining together for our third annual one-mile walking challenge, October 18th between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. It is at Burgess Elementary School gym. Vendors will be present with giveaways, all ages, all abilities, all welcome, and all are free. Priscilla, do you have any?
No. Are you gonna say about the town, the planning board?
Oh, I forgot. There is still an opening, and that's probably the most important one. There is still an opening on the planning board, so anyone interested, would you please send in your application here of the Town Administrator, Town Hall, 308 Main Street? Thank you. Thank you, Priscilla.
Has anyone applied? Has anyone applied yet?
One person has.
One person? Would it be reasonable to suggest that we just had an opening, not more than, I think it was a couple of months, I think?
Yeah, April.
Was it April? No. Was how, I don't think, was it April?
Yeah, it was April. Appointments were, we did appointments in May.
Okay. So, they're not that old, is what my point is, to look at that list?
Yeah, no, we do that. I mentioned it to Ted. We do go back.
And call them and see if they're even interested anymore. They may, I mean, you know, because it was a great list at the time.
I just mentioned that tonight.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I do believe that's part of the policy to go back and look and open it up, too.
We'll do that. It's a good idea.
Okay. Chase?
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
I just want to thank everybody that participated in the community bonfire. It was a real success, especially Kevin Filczak and Annie Rossioli and the fire department for really getting it going. I know we were there for quite a while and a lot of attendees and a lot of positive feedback. So, and thank the Host Hotel for co-sponsoring it with the Special Events Committee.
Okay. Next on the agenda, 6:35, which it is, we have a public hearing for Silver Tree Realty LLC forest cutting plan slash logging permit at 550 Route 15. Okay, do you have the? Let me write here.
In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 132, Section 40 to 46, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 1, 2018, at 6:35 on the petition of a logging permit for land at 550 Route 15 owned by Silver Tree Realty LLC. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, Thrive Main Street Sturbridge, and it's dated September 13th, 2018.
Okay. Do we have a representative? Okay, could you come and sit at one of the mics, please? It's for the people at home. And introduce yourself.
I'm Rich Velcourt. I'm the forester who completed the forest cutting plan. My Massachusetts license number is number 405.
Okay. Do you have the green cards, the notifications to butters?
Um, yeah, we didn't know if I had butters. I didn't bring them with me. I was not sure, I didn't know I had to have those here today.
Okay. Um, do you offhand know how many you sent out?
We had a certified butters list from the Town Assessor, and I think there were six, I believe.
Okay. And do you recall how many you had returned?
Um, I think most of them came back.
Four, three, five.
What's that? I think, yeah, I think there was three or, three or four of them that came back, maybe all of them.
Yeah.
Um, I wasn't aware I had to keep tabs on.
Yeah, well, you can drop them off. It's not required that they all be returned as long as enough are returned to show that you made the effort to notify.
Okay.
Okay, so could you please explain your project?
Um, so this was a 33-acre harvest area. Again, it was off of Route 15. And what's going on out here is, this is a forest that has not had any recent timber harvesting done to it. And in particular, it has a good amount of stocking of eastern hemlock. And eastern hemlock is going through problems right now with hemlock bolidigent, which is an insect that is basically feeding on the base of the needles and causing the trees to slowly die back over the course of time. So, this is something that we've been battling statewide. So, really, the target for this harvest is removing most of that hemlock, since most of it is in a state of decline anyways. Also, the focus is on tree spacing and also on the gypsy moth damaged northern red oak Probably about 15% of the stand has had total tree mortality from the gypsy moth damaged trees. Those trees will be removed as well. So, the focus for this harvest is really on removing the diseased trees and trying to establish a healthy regeneration layer in the understory after this harvest. There will be one stream crossing, which will be bridged, and then there'll be another small wetland crossing, which will be pulled for mitigation. All filter strips were painted with blue tree marking paint, and three dots were placed on the trees and spaced 50 feet apart from the stream, center line of the stream. The landing area will be located off of Route 15 as well. And the landing area will actually be in, I believe it was a, I think it was an old truck stop or something. I'm not quite sure what it was. I had talked with the highway department. He told me what it was. I don't recall offhand what it was, but it's on the side of 15, and it's like a, clearly an old parking area that was there, long and narrow.
Well, there used to be a Howard Johnson's.
Okay. I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know. But, um, it's right when you come down the driveway, it's immediately there, this large area. So, that's what's gonna be used as the landing area for the logs. And the good thing about the log traffic is it's basically gonna be on Route 15, and then the log truck's gonna go directly up the road and get onto 84, and they're gonna head north. That's basically the, most of the project there. Do you want me to go any more detail as far as the species being harvested, the amounts?
Well, we can take questions from the board.
Okay.
Anyone have a question? Priscilla? No. Chase? Mike?
Um, well, I read, read the, the report from the Conservation Department, and apparently there, there are some A&amp;R lots associated with, or next to the forestry locus. Are they north or south of the, the locus, or where, where are the A&amp;R lots?
So, those are like, those would be, like, preserved land, is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about?
Well, there's, along Route 15, there's, you know, there's an area not part of the forest cutting plan. Is that where that?
Okay, yep, yep.
Is that where they are?
Exactly. So, that's the area where, are you talking about house lots or something?
Yes.
Or yes, yes, that's where they're located.
Yeah. They're, they're subdividing the land and putting in some building lots.
So, that's not part of this forest cutting plan. So, we're basically just working on the, you know, backland. We made that clear in this, that, you know, this, this has not, not really, you know, nothing to do with that. And it is clearly delineated with the flagline behind the lots, the red and white flagline.
Yeah. Yeah. Apparently, there was, there must have been some, some mix-up, because I guess there was some cutting on that area?
Ah, well, that was part of the house lot clearing, which I didn't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
So, um, that was part of the whole house. This is whatever design, whatever they're doing there for building.
Yeah. Apparently, they came in for a wetland delineation last Friday, so.
Right. Because the Conservation Commission agent states that, you know, the SCC does not have any concerns with the proposed forestry activities moving forward, but in the meantime, they're working to resolve the wetland delineation aspects on the A&amp;R lot development, so they're two separate things. We also have something from the DPW Director. He has no concerns other than a bond requirement, which is always one of our requirements. I do notice on this page here, it could be me, your starting date.
Okay, that's the, that's the butters notice? Yeah. I don't have that on me.
Oh.
That's the butters notice there.
Can anybody read it?
I think it says 10/21/18.
Do you know, when do you expect to start?
Um, as soon as we get through this process, we plan, the harvesting plans to begin. So, we do have the approved forest cutting plan, so I guess basically as soon as possible. I can't make it out. I usually put fall or winter.
Oh, maybe that's what it says.
I think that's what it wrote. F.A. No. It's definitely F.A.
Yeah.
I didn't see the two Ls, but.
Oh, on there, on the actual cutting plan.
Yeah, no, that one's different, yeah.
It's missing an L.
It's missing an L.
I still have the bond check here.
Okay, that will be, the administrative assistant will be taking that. Okay, it is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public have any questions, comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? So, I'm moved. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay, five to nothing. Is there someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the forest cutting plan, subject to our standard conditions that we, we put on all, all applications. I don't have them in front of me right now.
Um, I think I have most of them someplace. Yeah, logging operations shall be allowed Monday through Friday with no harvesting unrecognized Massachusetts legal holidays from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to dusk, and on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., noon. No Sunday or holiday hours. The applicant shall coordinate transportation with the town school bus schedule to avoid conflict between logging operations and school bus operations. Work will commence when the ground is dry, frozen, or otherwise stable. A $5,000 road maintenance bond shall be submitted to the Town Administrator before starting work to ensure that repairs are made to any town roads damaged as a result of the subject forestry harvest project, and may additionally require a performance bond to ensure erosion control measures before, during, and for a reasonable period of time after the proposed operation. Said bond shall be released by the treasurer upon inspection and a satisfactory finding by the DPW Director. A licensed timber harvester is identified prior to commencement. The DPW Director and Conservation Agent should be notified before starting work. Do you have any objection or questions about any of those?
No.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second, then, to?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay. Okay, good luck. Do you need a list of our conditions?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, do you? Oh, didn't see you over there. One of us is getting shorter. Okay, I'll wait till Janey's back to take the minutes on that.
She's gonna have to show me how to use the machine. I think she's more important than I am. I might probably have done it.
You can't take shorthand?
Not shorthand. I can take scribble.
Scribble.
If I have to, I could take minutes, but.
Yeah. Well, it shouldn't take the second.
In the future, in the future, I'll probably better app.
Well, we can just put it in and continue, just to have the record show that we're being recorded by the telegramming gazette. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a vote to approve the energy reduction plan in accordance with the Massachusetts Green Communities Program, and we have our Town Planner.
Should I be up here right now?
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you introduce yourself for the people at home, please?
I'm Jeanne Buban, your Town Planner, and with me this evening is Dominique DeTremble from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. So, we're here this evening to present the energy reduction plan for, it's really our last step in the designation process to become a green community. So, we would be seeking an approval this evening, because the deadline for the applications, I believe, is October 26th, so time is of the essence. We've been working very hard on this. So, for several months, I've been coordinating energy audits of the town buildings and of the Burgess Elementary School with a consultant that Dominique arranged to have us use. And through this process, we've identified a variety of energy savings, excuse me, saving measures that could be implemented that, in the end, will save us significant money on energy costs and could potentially be covered with the Green Communities Program. So, we need to acquire or achieve a 5% reduction in energy usage over the next five years after adoption. So, since some of our buildings are pretty energy efficient, we'll need to, you know, really look at every measure very carefully, and that's what Dominique has really done with us. So, she's worked very hard to put together a plan that she believes will help us achieve that 5% reduction, including some of the measures in our buildings, along with the fuel-efficient vehicle policy and the anti-idling policy. So, Dominique can go through the plan or provide you an overview or answer any questions that you may have about the plan.
Thanks so much for having me here tonight. It's great to see all of you, and I'm very pleased for the opportunity to speak to you about the plan tonight. So, the way that I, maybe I should start with CMRPC for the folks at home. CMRPC is the Designated Planning Entity for Central Massachusetts. We serve the city of Worcester and the 39 surrounding communities in a variety of areas from homeland security to transportation to economic development to energy efficiency. So, the plan that is before you tonight is a strategy to help the town reduce its energy use by 20% in five years. To be eligible for a green community, you had to meet five criteria. Jeanne has very effectively shepherded the town through most of the criteria, and as she indicated, adoption of the energy reduction plan is the final component of this. So, the way that I think about these plans is I think about them in three sections, really. The first section is a lay of the land. What's out there for buildings? What are they, what type of energy are they using? What's going on with your streetlights? How, you know, what are your vehicles? What does the fleet look like? So, that's the first section. The second section assesses all of the municipal energy use in town. So, we took a look, working closely with the town, and collected energy use for, for a specific year, for every single municipal facility, and the Burgess Elementary School, as well as streetlights and vehicles, water and sewer, and we came up with a baseline. So, what, what did you use in baseline 2017? The third, the third section of the plan is a strategy on how to reduce the energy usage by 20% in five years. The Green Communities Program requires that 15% of that be in hard projects, whether that's buildings or an anti-idling policy, but something really documentable. The other 5% can come from softer measures. So, working with the team that came in and audited your buildings at no cost, they identified a variety of measures to help you reduce energy, and we complemented that with a couple of measures to get you over the 15% in hard projects hump. So, about this plan, the way that I see it is it's, it's a strategy document, and when you commit to the plan, what you're committing to isn't any particular measure in the plan. You're committing to strive to reduce your energy use by 20% in five years. So, once you're designated, you can use this as a suite of projects that you can pick from and implement as best fit, you know, the town and the current, you know, capital plan and the other priorities, so.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any question on the plan? I mean, we've had it. I'm sure everyone's had time to read through it. Very well written. Mike?
Yeah, I did have a question on, you know, I was looking at the amount of electric usage, usage, say, on page seven for the water and sewer. They use, you know, about two-thirds of the total electricity that the town uses is water and sewer department. I was scanning through the, the report to see if there was any opportunity to put in VFDs, variable frequency drives and stuff, and I didn't really see any discussion about that, because that's, that's really low-hanging fruit. Also, like, the, in schools, there's a lot of, you know, 5-hustle or 10-hustle motors. If you put VFDs on them, it's a significant amount of savings, much more than, like, changing the lightnings to LED, although that's a really good idea, too. But the real low-hanging fruit of about saving a lot of money is making sure the electric motors are efficient.
I completely concur, and so, it does briefly note elsewhere in the plan that VFDs were not included in this assessment, although they should be. They, your water and sewer activities constitute a full 23% of your usage, and I, I would definitely like to see the team come back out and bring their subcontractor in and take a look at your water and sewer operations and the other facilities to examine VFDs. If given more time, I would have liked to have had that in there.
Yeah. I, I mean, the, the plan can be modified in the future, and it's, it is a plan to, we gotta start somewhere, so. I just wanted to, you know, I, earlier in the process, I mentioned VFDs as well, and I, I agree that takes experts to come out and do a, you know, piece of equipment, each, each piece of equipment's different, so it's, you know, it's a lot of work, and it's, it's pretty expensive to convert them, but there are grant programs out there to get money to, to do the conversions.
If you'd like, maybe perhaps Jeanne and I could work on, working with a consultant to get the team, to get a subcontractor team out here to take a look, so that you're ready when you have your grant funding to include that in the project mix.
Yeah, I, I think that's really an area of low-hanging fruit, as far as energy efficiency.
Okay. Excuse me, anything else from anyone?
I just had a.
Mary?
I had a question. I don't know if it's a little bit off-subject, but you'll tell me. So, when you look at the streetlights in terms of being more energy efficient, and we're going to utilize solar energy, et cetera, if we were to, like, bury our utility poles, does that, would that have any effect? Because I assume we'd have to have different streetlights and...
I'm not sure I can speak to that. I don't have the engineering proficiency, but we will definitely make sure, you know...
I was just curious. I mean, it's, it's a project that we're, haven't, hasn't gotten off the ground yet, but we are contemplating it.
Okay.
So, I was just curious about that.
I'll look into it for you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Mike?
Oh, sorry. Quick question. Tantascwa was not looked at because it's regional, correct? That's the reason why we?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
Mike?
No, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Ted? Sorry.
In my previous life, I actually had an opportunity to work with Dominique.
Yes.
And I, I'm sure that in Northbridge, that they, they do a lot of work on the sewer plant with, with the same thing that Mr. Supernat's bringing up tonight, and save money for them, so.
Wonderful.
Same consulting, I'm not, you can probably check to see what they use, because that really was.
I think it is. You, in Northbridge, you worked with ECI, Energy Conservation Action.
They had, they had the different change of motors and the drives, and that's all that good terminology that they said that was part of the plan. So, it should be probably a good thing to look at.
Perfect, and I'll, I'll make sure to follow up on that.
Okay. Um, would somebody like to make a motion, then, to approve the energy reduction plan?
I would like to make a motion to approve the energy reduction plan, realizing that we have to work hard to, to get our energy consumption down. And, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the plan so far. It's a lot of data in there, and it's, somebody had to get together.
Yeah, it's true. Very, very.
But it's readable.
Very detailed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Okay, next we have Police Chief Ford. Good evening again, Chief.
Good evening. I'm waiting for a prospective candidate who happens to be here with his wife and two very young sons.
Yes.
So, they're just trying to coordinate the efforts of a two-year-old and an infant in the hall. Bear with us, please.
Oh, no problem. We're walking through it.
Come on, scoot over, he's asleep.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present before the board. Candidate for the part-time reserve officer position, Colby Titula. I'm requesting to fill this part-time reserve police officer position that was recently vacated by Officer Eric Rondina, who left us to go work in a full-time police capacity for Yarmouth PD down on the Cape. The part-time reserve officer position's a support position that's filled by a full-time academy-trained and fully-certified police officer. We utilize this position for training and development of our future full-time police officers, as well as a resource for filling any vacancies and special duties. This part-time reserve officer's position will not adversely affect or increase our fiscal '19 budget. Mr. Titula, who's no stranger to the area, as he grew up in Brook, nearby Brookfield, and began his police career working part-time in some of the area departments. He comes to us with 16 years of full-time police officer experience. He currently lives in Millbury with his wife and children. He's employed as a police officer with the Boston College Police Department. He is full-time academy-trained. He's passed all of his physical, psychological, and background checks. He was a finalist in our most recent process for filling a full-time position. At this time, I would recommend appointing Colby Titula to the position of reserve police officer at the starting rate of a second-year full-time police officer of 28, 27 per hour effective October 2nd, 2018.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions from the board? None? We're quiet this evening. Okay, with... Okay, would someone then be willing to make a motion? So moved?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Mike?
No, I don't know.
Oh, no, I couldn't see...
Is that enough for you?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at Colby's resume and just going, wow.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 She's got everybody.
She's got the whole family.
There he goes. There he goes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a vote to approve livery licenses for two new drivers, Hilda Gallo and Mildred, no, yeah, Mildred Goddard, for the livery service that's been provided by the businesses on Saturdays. They've extended it into November. Does anybody have any questions on the two individuals? The police chief has looked it over and has approved both.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Do you want motion for each one or one motion for both?
Either way, it's...
I will move to, to approve the application for taxi cab livery licenses for Mildred Goddard and for Hilda Gallo.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. So, I saw on Kevin Filczek's email that he sent out that they're changing the route a little. It's a little bit more on-demand and less frequent stops to cut down on the waiting time. Okay, next up, we have a senior center committee update and warrant article support request. Oh, Ken White's going to present. He'll be back in in a minute. The other ladies, well, the ladies don't want to come up, right? Did many show up at the meeting on Thursday? You're up, Ken.
Yep.
Okay, this is Ken White. He's chairman of the study committee. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and also, just time on the agenda, and I'm working with you in the future. I come before you on behalf of the senior centers study committee, request your support and sponsorship of a warrant article for formal feasibility study to examine the cost and design of renovation or expansion of the existing senior center building and also examine estimated costs and designs of the purpose of land and construction of a new senior center somewhere in town. If I can give you a little update on the work we've been doing. Committee has reviewed the architectural form of CME's space needs analysis and agrees with that firm that the current building is deficient in size and functionality. We did have several meetings going over this square footage analysis of each room. We tried to cut some square footage here and add some there, but no matter how we cut it, we still came up short. After that, the town, the committee also visited a number of town-owned properties that could be suitable for a new senior center. Only one parcel of land, actually, there was only, there was two, but one of them had a restriction on it. There was one parcel of land visited by the committee members was thought to be suitable, that being a parcel of 14 acres located at number 70 Cedar Street. We would hope that this parcel would be considered in the study. With the help of the expertise of Town Administrator Leon Goman and a request for proposals for purchase of land and buildings in Stirbridge was published in the Central Register and the Worcester Telegram in June with a deadline of August 1st for submission. There were no submissions received. The committee feels that they have exhausted all options leading up to our request for support from the Board of Selectmen with a warrant article for a formal feasible feasibility study at the next special town meeting. If this study were to happen and a new building was to be a recommendation, if a dual-purpose building or a community center were more conducive for state funds, we would be open to that if the seniors or not stock chains on space. The committee wants to thank former town administrator Leon Goman for going above and beyond all our expectations with his help and also make thanks to Chair Pearson and Selectman Mary Blanchett for her guidance and...
Okay, now, Ken, I thought the request was going to be for the annual town meeting.
Excuse me?
I thought the request for the money for feasibility study was going to be for the annual town meeting.
Well, I, I thought it was the fall, but...
Well, I mean, only because we have a draft of the special town meeting warrant and we'll be closing it tonight, so we don't really have that. And we would certainly, definitely need a number to move forward and, not only a number, but where the money's going to come from. Would it be, you know, a reserve fund transfer or raise and appropriate?
So, that would, we can't make the special town meeting, you understand?
Well, we don't really have enough information, I believe, to get a good warrant article together for, for that meeting.
Okay.
And I was maybe at fault because I really firmly believed it was going to be June when we'd have more people there and more information.
Okay. So, do we have to come before you again or...
No, you could ask for our support to move forward with writing a warrant article for the annual town meeting and, you know, we would get the numbers together for it and everything and where it was coming from.
Be happy to have worked with you and...
Yeah, yeah. And Mr. Kozak will be more than willing to work with us.
Happy to try to help prepare that for this, for this spring town meeting.
Yeah, because it would be just a guess to estimate what money it would cost.
I understand. It was all kind of fast because I was on vacation and I came back and you had notified me we were on the...
Yeah, but I mean, we could certainly take a vote tonight to support a warrant article and then get the ball moving on that, if the board so moves. Priscilla?
I have a question. What's the difference between this study and the one we just got done?
The one that was done was just a needs assessment, you know, space and everything.
Didn't it come out and say that we needed a new one?
No.
Was it a preference?
Even the feasibility study would be between renovating what we have or a new one, but in a feasibility study, you get much more detail.
Wouldn't we be better served in the future to spend money once instead of twice? I mean, like, and do a complete study the first shot around? Would we not have been better served financially? I'm just saying, in the future, financially, to have done something like this that incorporated its issues and then came up with it? Because it's money we've spent already and now we're going to spend again. I mean, just for the community.
Yeah, because we had done that for three needs assessments.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, I, your point's well-taken, but it's water over the dam right now.
Yeah, right. But I think from this point on, I think it's something we should consider. I mean, I would rather say it's going to cost $50,000 to do a complete study than 25 now, another 35 or 40 later, and then you do it once and you have everything you need. I'm, that's just a thought for the future.
No, it's true. I mean, in this case, it was just, you know, what space do we have now? What do we feel we need and then...
Which brings me, if I can, I mean, if I can tie it to this, to this one sitting here for the $10,000 for the floor, if we, if that center's going to get renovated, let's just say that's what's decided, what happens to that floor?
Well, you never know.
I know, that's my point.
It would, yeah, no, it would be, yeah, but don't forget, Priscilla, these things, even, you know, if we get feasibility study voted and everything, it takes a while. It really does. And when they look at a feasibility study, they would certainly be looking at what's there, you know? If we renovate there, can we use what's there? How can we use it, you know? So, it's, it's not wasted money. I mean, the flooring is something they need now.
Oh, I don't, I don't argue that. That place is in shambles, but I'm just saying what will happen if we put this, I don't want to put good money in after that situation.
No, but a feasibility study and architect and everything, they, you know, will take all that into consideration when they look at it. Anyone else?
I just had a question. I don't disagree with Priscilla, but, you know, this isn't really my area, but couldn't, and I don't think it would have happened with the senior center because I agree, I mean, they've totally outgrown the space, but couldn't a needs assessment come back saying the existing space is sufficient and with, with some projects so that you wouldn't go to a feasibility study?
Right.
In some instances. So, I think, I don't know, I don't think it would have happened with the senior center, but the feasibility study is a lot more, is more expensive.
Needs assessment looks at space, too, but take into account even the safety complex.
Right.
There's space issues, but there's also equipment issues and traffic issues and look at the poor DPW, I mean...
Oh, no, what I'm saying is sometimes doing the needs assessment is a good prudent course of action because it might not lead to a feasibility study.
Right, they could come back, not in this case, but...
Could we not use our facilities person to help us with that?
The feasibility?
Like, for example, like, no, for example, in the future, could we have our facilities person tell us whether we should do a needs assessment or a feasibility study?
Well, he could certainly give input. Chief, chief.
It's a good, I think it's a very good idea. She's new, but I think that might be an area where she could help.
She's quite...
And that would, that would feed to Mary's point about sometimes you need one, sometimes you need the other, and I would think the facilities person would be the one to know.
Exactly.
Right, right. Because we do have the other two. Do you have, have you seen copies of the other studies?
No, I haven't seen any.
And CMC is not in that business of doing it anymore, so, you know, I guess we're lucky we got what we got, Ken, when we, when we got it. So, but those are issues down the road. To answer their question, would somebody like to make a motion to support moving forward with a feasibility study article at the annual town meeting?
Okay.
Oh, you go ahead.
Yes, well, I'd, I'd like to comment and then make a motion. I think Priscilla's comment about having somebody like the facilities person representing the town in this process is very important. I think having an, usually, if, on a very large project, you would, even at this feasibility stage, the town may consider hiring an owner's project manager.
Well, it's certain amount of money you have to...
At some point, we will, we will have to, but at the feasibility stage, if we have somebody there looking out for the town's interest, I think it's very, very important. You know, the architects can draw plans and do estimates and stuff like that, but to guide the whole process, I think it's important to have, you know, somebody guiding the process at this, at this point. I strongly, I'm very supportive of an article. I can't say how strongly I support an article next, at the annual town meeting. I would have wished we could have gotten something together this, this fall, but we haven't and our next chance at it is in the spring. I think we can put together a great article, have good estimates from, put, you know, what the architectural cost will, will be at this, this stage of the game. So, I think, I'd like to make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, support an article to be at next annual town meeting for feasibility study and maybe even a preliminary design of, once a site is selected either, and I think we're at a good stage. We've got basically two options from what Kenny just told us, so I think we're at a good stage to have somebody take a look at it and so we can finally decide what we're going to do. So, my motion is to support senior center feasibility study and, and a preliminary design and cost estimates.
Okay, that would be in the feasibility study.
Well, not necessarily. A feasibility study, I'm pushing the envelope a little bit.
Well, wait a minute. You know, if we put it within the scope of what we want in the feasibility study, you'll get that.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm saying I want to go to the preliminary design stage so we've got some good hard cost estimates rather than some, some, a feasibility study might give us some, some less concrete cost estimates, so I want to go at it.
You know, it'll be on either a renovation or a new building.
Yeah, one or the other, but once, once we get through the feasibility, we go right into preliminary design.
All right, I'm going to second it, but I just want to clarify, when you say preliminary design, you're not identifying whether the existing building will be expanded and renovated or a new location?
Not, no.
You're just saying whatever the feasibility study determines?
If it's going to be renovated, that needs design work, architectural design work, and if it's going to be at a new site, then that would require design work, but we've, we've been dealing with it for quite a few years now and I, you know, I don't want to just say, oh, we're going to do a feasibility study and then two, two years from now, then we'll decide we're going to do a preliminary design, you know, or three years from now. I want to, I want to go do feasibility and preliminary design.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the town administrator, in your experience, if you do a feasibility study and you require preliminary drawings like is requested, does that increase the cost of the feasibility study? Is it almost like getting plans to get going?
In my past experience, I've only done separately. I can't say I ever seen it combined.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking you.
I think what Mr. Nod's asking is...
He wants them together.
Well, I don't know if he wants them actually together, but to have both ready for the spring town meeting.
Spring town meeting, yeah.
I'm assuming that, and I'm not an expert, that would be something maybe our facilities person, if it's feasible, that you would have the funds for the, you know, for, for doing both, that is, it is doable, that you could do both these at the same time. If not, then you may have to just do the feasibility first and then see how that works out and then come back with preliminary, but if it's feasible, I, I imagine it could be done. I just don't think it's done it's together. I think it's done separately.
Right. That's why I've not heard it together. That's why I'm asking you.
Even if I'm not an expert, you know, I just never have the experience.
Just your experience, that's all.
In my experience, I never did both at the same time.
Okay, thanks.
Next question, too. Wouldn't we have to review the feasibility of this study?
I would think so.
And make a determination as to what way we wanted to go?
Mm-hmm.
That's my only...
Mine, too.
That's my only question. I'm not, I like the fact that you want to expedite it, but say the feasibility study comes back with two possible scenarios and both, both are reasonable, one has pros, one has cons, and we have to review that, decide where we want... Scenarios, and both, it, both are reasonable. One has pros, one has cons, and we have to review that, decide where we want the design, whether at the existing location or someplace else.
Well, that's what, when Burgess Elementary School, when their feasibility study came back and everything, when they presented to town meeting, they gave a couple of options. And the one that they recommended was a new part plus renovation in the old part.
Right.
But they did have, and you reviewed the feasibility.
Because I would be on, I mean, I would be on board with.
Town meeting reviewed that? I don't think so. It was the school committee, right, that made a recommendation?
They made a recommendation, but then we vote, we vote.
But it wasn't even the school committee that made the recommendation. It was the building committee that made the recommendation.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If this item doesn't have to decide tonight, perhaps we can try to get some more information.
Exactly.
You can come back.
It's not, we're not doing this now.
Right, and I would.
Gonna make a decision. It's, it's.
I think it makes sense.
Ken, you know, you know, you know you have the board's support, so however.
You got unanimous support.
However, we decide to do the motion, we'll still be supporting.
We've got plenty of time for it. I think you're right.
Even if the design required a special town meeting after the feasibility.
Right.
But I have a, I just wanted to, you gave your overview, and I just wanted to go back to something that you said. Um, you, did, I hear you correctly, that the committee is amenable to a community center in the event that that increases our chances of a grant through the state?
Right.
Or, or no, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but.
But if it, if it was decided, uh, to go with a new building, uh, we would be open, if, if it was easier to get state funds.
Okay.
Uh, for a community center, a dual-purpose building, we would be open to that.
Okay, I just wanted to, I heard you correctly then.
But, you know, I don't wanna shortchange the, the seniors either. I wanna make sure they get their space.
Oh, I understand, but a community center for all ages, if it was in a larger building, you would be open to that. Okay, okay.
Do you know if you can get state funds? Do you have any knowledge to that you can get state funds?
I asked Todd Smoller about state funds, and he said a community center would be more conducive for state funds.
But there's no guarantee for state funds?
No, there's never guarantees for the state.
No, I know, that's why I'm, that, 'cause this is like.
Even after they guarantee.
I see this as like two years down the road, so by that time.
Oh, yeah.
Who knows, you know?
And certainly, if it was the community center, it would have to be a bigger.
Bigger spot.
It would have to be a considerably bigger space, 'cause now it would be all ages.
Right.
So, we can, um, we'll work on the motion to get where we wanna get, okay? Um, so Mike, do you wanna withdraw your motion tonight?
I'll withdraw my motion tonight, and we'll work on how far we actually wanna go next spring. I'm, I'm trying to push it along a little bit, because, you know, I, I know that the committee has been working on it for quite a while, and I think they would like to see, see some movement on it. And my, my fear is that, okay, we do a feasibility study next fiscal year, and we still don't have anything that we could submit for grant funding or anything like that. Or submit to town meeting for a vote for, to move, move ahead with, uh, you know, final design and construction.
Okay.
So, well, you know, the way, I don't want it to last, you know, five, six, seven years before we're, we're ready to.
Yeah, but I tell you, Mike, a lot of these projects during Burgess Elementary School, between, between the time they got a building committee together, was approximately ten years.
Yeah.
And even, even if you got the drawings, you'd still have to go back to the town to ask the town to support the drawing and the cost. You, it's not gonna change anything.
That's why everything's gotta, but everything's gotta be done with due diligence.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the more information we have, the better we can present.
We understand that. We've, we've been three years already on this.
But I mean, even if we did the feasibility stu-, if we broke it down, which, and did a feasibility study in the spring, we wouldn't necessarily have to wait a full year to do design. I mean, we approved Burgess at a special town meeting.
Right.
We could call a special town meeting.
Yeah.
Even before the fall, for the purpose of looking at preliminary design.
Now, with that feasibility study you're talking about, would that include that piece of land that we looked at, town-owned land?
Well, well, because if we're looking at either renovations or a new site, that new site would certainly be presented to whoever's gonna do the feasibility study. Because we really don't have much town-owned land that is suitable, as you know.
Yeah.
You know, as you know.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mary, did you want to withdraw your second?
I will.
Okay, so we will work on that, Ken, and you won't have to come in again. You can practice up for town meeting.
Okay, and I'll be looking forward to meeting.
Yes, and, and.
I'll try to get a chance to come down to see.
Mr. Kozak will work with you.
I'll be right there for the party about it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, next on the agenda, we have the special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I can appreciate why they would.
Okay, does everybody have their copy?
Yes.
Okay, now Chase, you haven't been through this process before with us. Um, we usually read the articles.
He was.
Was?
I did the one in June.
You did the one for June, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you should be a pro.
I don't know about that, but.
That's okay. None of us are. Okay, so Article thirty-four, unpaid bills of a previous year, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year or take any action relative thereto. And we will, well, before the meeting, have the dollar amount in the accounts. Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to place and support? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, Article thirty-five, free cash transfer costs associated with the town administrator's search, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash for the purpose of costs associated with the town administrator's search or take any action relative thereto.
I can explain that a little bit if you want. Okay, so we had our first meeting. Uh, just by way of background, um, Bill Hagerty is our chair, and Tom Ford is our vice chair, and I am the clerk. So I'm gonna have to go to Janay and get some lessons. Anyways, at Ted's suggestion, we, at our first meeting, contemplated the use of a professional search firm. We looked at the memo that, uh, our former town administrator had given us, and we decided unanimously to consider, um, two firms. We haven't made a decision if we're gonna use them, but we wanted to invite them to give a presentation, so they could go over the scope of what they would do, scope of services, as well as costs. So, um, this warrant article is a placeholder in the event that, um, they have, they've been invited to our next meeting, which is October fourth. Where we've invited two firms. Um, the first firm is Bernie Lynch from Community Paradigm, who came highly recommended by Chief Ford. Um, he was at a recent training, and several, I think he said three police chiefs, um, all recommended this search firm. They had utilized it very recently. And I believe that was the firm that secured Leon's employment as well at, in West.
I don't know that part.
I believe, I think that's what Tom said, but in any event, he highly recommended them, so we took that recommendation. And Eric Gaspar had very good things to say about the Collins Center for Public Management, Management. So they've both been invited to give thirty-minute presentations on October fourth in the afternoon. And then following that, we'll discuss whether or not we wanna use a firm or try to do it independently on our own. But, uh, we would need them, put, we need it on the warrant now, in the event we decide to do it.
Okay.
Did I?
You explained very well.
Okay, Ted, thank you.
Okay, then, is there a motion to place and support?
I'll make a motion to place and support an article, uh, for the costs associated, is, Article thirty-five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
And we, we'll have a number. We can reopen it up, right?
Yeah. All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, Article thirty-six, free cash transfer to town administrator's salary account, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to the town administrator's salary account or take any act, any action relative thereto. Is there a motion? Can I ask what that's for? Ted?
Two purposes. One is apparently, it looks to be a shortfall in my, the salary account for town manager for vacation pay that was, that was not figured into the budget process for Leon's position when he left. And also, as we discussed in the search committee, um, the committee is interested, perhaps looking to see if this salary, present salary is competitive to what other managers may receive and may wish to talk about increasing it for a new position. And this would also help take care of that if that's all decided.
Do we have a number?
No, can I flesh that out a little bit?
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no, thank you, Ted, that's right. I think Barbara, initially, she's the one who came up with this warrant article for what Ted said.
For the first part.
For the first part of it, and I think it was eleven thousand.
It was, it was eleven thousand.
It was eleven thousand, so it was Barbara's initial article, because of unused vacation time, and where, and Ted's salary is roughly equivalent to what, uh.
Right, and, and, and the assumption is too, whoever we hire will probably be very similar to what you pay now.
So, and the second part, um, is I need to get the pulse of the board of selectmen, because we discussed whether or not, when we post, are we, would the board possibly support, if the data, um, supports it, an increase in the, in what, um, we would offer for pay to a new town administrator? In other words, they don't wanna go through the work of seeing what comparable towns are paying, or what the search firm recommends, if everybody on the board is adamant that we will not exceed what Leon's, um, salary was or what his grade was. So he was making roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand this past year, and Barbara indicated that the upper range of that grade was one forty-nine.
The current one, correct.
One forty-nine and some change. Um, would the board support exceeding one forty-nine?
To how, to where?
We, well, again, it's like a chicken, it's like a chicken and an egg.
You'd have to come in with it. Um, I would be amenable to supporting a wire to range, a higher range on it, because it is difficult to hire, and the prices, when you do look, um, we're not close to being high. We're not low, but in the middle, and I do believe, you know, you get a better pool, particularly with people who have had experiences in other towns and who would like to improve, and that would mean improving their salary too, so.
I, I personally, I may reconsider this at the town meeting, but right now, without a number, I'm not good with it. I'm good with the eleven thousand. I'm definitely good with that part.
At this point, we're just asking, I guess I'm just asking, put the article on.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And the committee will do some research.
I'm good with placing the article. I just can't support it at this time.
I get, I get it, and I had a feeling that was possibly going to be people's view. I, I think it was Eric, but it was kind of agreed to. Nobody wanted to inquire of different salaries, et cetera, if right down the line, everybody said, there's no, hold on, there's no way we'll support anything beyond one forty-nine. It's doing unnecessary work when we would not support it at all. Obviously, if the board said, we're open to considering a higher range, as Mary, that Mary gave a very general support, they're gonna go back. We're gonna go back and look at it. I may come back and say, the board feels like one forty-nine is the upper limit is good. But they didn't wanna do work, only to be told, we're not gonna exceed one forty-nine no matter what, based upon our current fiscal.
Oh, I get that. I don't, I don't have an issue with that, what you're, with what you're saying, but I, right now, as today, at the town meeting, I will cha-, I could change my mind. That's not my point. But with no, with no idea where you're going, I, I'm agreeing to place this article. I just can't support it right now. Without a number.
Right, it's gonna be placed anyway for Barbara's purposes?
I mean, I agree with the vacation, that's owed, and that eleven thousand, and, and Ted's salary, I have no issue with that.
Okay.
I just, I'm not ready to support part two.
I guess, I guess it's a chicken and egg, and I can appreciate that, but I'd like to know how everybody else feels. Um, I think.
I have no problem with the, the eleven thousand for that, but I do, I, I feel that a hundred and forty-five thousand's a good salary to pay a new town administrator, and that's, you know, I, I wouldn't like to go above that.
Okay, that, that's useful for us to know.
One forty-nine, just.
Yeah, one forty-nine, would that, I mean, that's.
That's the current grade.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, I, um, again, I, I would, uh, uh, place the article right now, and I, I'd like to hear more information on what, what the marketplace is for town administrators, and, you know, how much we should be paying.
So you're open to us looking into it further?
I'm open to an increase above one forty-nine, if it comes back that, that that's what we need to do to get a, a good town administrator.
Okay, that, so I think there's.
Yeah.
Three of us that are open. I think you were pretty much not open, but it doesn't matter.
I'm not open, yeah.
It's, there's enough.
I didn't say I wasn't open.
No, I know, you're like three and a half. You did, you said something different than what Chase said, but, but it was just you.
You said one forty-nine.
I'm at one forty-nine.
Why do we make a motion to place it?
I get it.
I'll place, I'll second to place it.
Okay, somebody has to, I'll make the motion to place.
I'll make a motion to place it.
I beat you, Mike.
Yeah, Mary made it.
Sorry.
I second the motion to place it.
Seconded it already.
Okay, Priscilla, okay, all in favor of placing the article? Okay, five to nothing.
And I think, just so everybody knows where I'm coming from, I, I think there's sufficient openness to exceed the one forty-nine, so I think we will inquire of the search firms, you know, what their experience is and.
Or do your own, or do your own research too.
And do our, oh, definitely.
And do your own research, of course.
They just didn't want a situation like, why did you look into, we're not gonna exceed it.
I think you have some direction.
Yeah.
Okay, Article thirty-seven, community preservation, lighting town bond field, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from community preservation fund, undesignedated fund balance, a sum of one hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars to be allocated for lighting on town bond field or take any action relative thereto. Do we have motion?
I have a question.
Mary?
Um, is, is this the CPC that's sponsoring it?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article thirty-seven, community preservation, lighting town bond field.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, Article thirty-eight, community preservation, removal of outbuilding Plimpton property, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the community preservation fund, open space, the sum of eight thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars to be allocated for the removal of a dilapidated outbuilding on the Plimpton property or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support it, but I, I question whether you can use, uh, open space money to do demolition. If, if the town council says it's fine, I'm, I'm good with it.
Yeah, well, all these will be certainly contingent upon approval by town council.
I'll assume the town council will, will approve using, uh, the open space funds for demolition.
Yeah, it's a placeholder. It's there. Mary?
No, I, I agree, but I, I think it's okay, only because I know when they amended the CPA, you can now use the money to renovate existing facilities. So I mean, I would think you'd be able to take down a dilapidated building.
That could be out of gen-, there's also a general.
The general, right, but.
So I don't, I don't know if we can take it out of, of open space. It might have to come out of general or whatever.
Well, is the open space fund the general fund? Because usually we call one, yeah, but that's undecency, but usually the fund that is just conservation says conservation, rather than open space, doesn't it? I thought the open space term was for the.
Yeah.
I, I, we're both saying that. I, I understand your concern.
But, uh, I'd, I'd like town council to check.
Oh, yeah, town council will.
Council is providing the language.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
They supplied the language?
Did they supply the language?
No, they had, we gave the articles to them to look at.
Right, yeah.
But if it is in open space, there's another part in CPA that it can come out of, so no problem.
I'll second that.
Okay, Chase, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Okay, Article thirty-nine, online board and committee database software, where to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing online board and committee database software or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
So moved, place and support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, what, what exactly is this for? I mean, it's.
Ted, do you know the details?
I don't have any idea.
Where did it come from?
Town clerk, town clerk's op, it's town clerk's article.
Okay, okay, so it's for the town clerk's office mostly to keep track of.
Committees and.
Okay.
It might be part of the public posting the law, open meeting law, that could be what's part of.
Ted, I know this is just preliminary, usually we do put the sponsors down.
Okay, did.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why we're asking.
Second.
I don't know how it was done, where you're coming from, but.
No, we did have the sponsors on our articles.
Okay, so I know.
This, I, I didn't, to be honest with you, I didn't know how, I thought this is where you did your articles, I didn't really.
We, we do put who was sponsored.
In draft form, I thought this is the way you did it.
Oh, no, well, draft, yeah, but we put who sponsored and what the vote was.
Yeah, I took the notes for the, the departments that submitted them, but I didn't put them down on this, but.
That's fine.
We will, I'm sure for the article.
Okay, any more discussion on the article? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five to nothing. Article forty, tree removal and pruning due to gypsy moth damage, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of two hundred seventy thousand dollars to the gypsy moth dead tree account for the purposes of removing dead public shade trees and pruning dead limbs caused by the recent gypsy moth infestation-related costs or take any action relative thereto. And this is, as you know, from the tree warden.
This is from the tree warden, yeah.
He gave a presentation. Is there a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Article forty-one, underground utility study, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of ninety thousand six hundred dollars for the purpose of funding a study to determine the cost and feasibility of underground, undergrounding the existing overhead utilities on Main Street Route twenty between Brookfield Road and New Boston Road or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Mike?
Yeah, I'd, rather than give this money to the utility companies, which is, I think we would be better off hiring, and it doesn't say that, that we're going to do it in, in the manner that was planned, but, because we could use this money to hire a consulting engineer to come up with the, the information we need rather than hiring it or using the utility companies to do the planning and design.
Well, it doesn't really say who's going.
It doesn't say who's going to do it.
I do believe this information did come from the utility companies, but I imagine you could look at it.
Yeah, so this doesn't restrict us from.
Because I know Jean was waiting for information from all three.
Correct.
I think it's Pear, isn't it Pear doing this?
No. No, I think it was just figures from each utility company.
Yeah.
And Pear, I think she said Pear to me today.
Maybe, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Chase?
Wouldn't it be practiced like, yes, we appropriate the money, but then it goes out to bid on who does the study?
Can.
I mean, I, I think that would be the most logical.
Your worst-case scenario, I think, probably using the utility companies.
Right, yeah, and then, then we could, you know, possibly get it a lot cheaper, so.
But I think.
Priscilla? I'm conflicted on this one. I get the, I get the aesthetic piece of it, in that it's part of the commercial tourist district revitalization, however, from what I remember the last time when we talked about this, when we were on that plan, all rate holders were going to be paying for this. And what I'm trying to think of is, we just heard about the seniors, we have a senior center that certainly needs an attention in some fashion or another. We have a DPW building that needs something also, and I think, I'm not sure the town is ready to bite this one, because it's going to be in the millions. It was in the millions five years ago, it's going to not get cheaper, it's going to get more expensive. I, I guess I, I'm just not sure I want to pay for that aesthetics at this point. I think we have so many other things, just in my opinion, that the taxpayers are going to be asked to pay for. I don't know that I want to go this route yet.
No, I understand the cost of it and the rate pays, and I do know last time there was one particular rate payer who would have really been slammed.
Right, and all the businesses, it doesn't, it also doesn't include what it takes to connect the businesses to this. That's the other piece that's not in this paradigm.
Yeah.
So, at this point, I can't support it.
Yeah, well, this is just for a study.
Right.
Feasibility, you know, of doing it. So we have a motion and a second to place and support. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, all opposed, four to one. Okay, Penny?
Well, thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt, but as we had spoken about, this is what the motion that we just, of course, town council always cleans it up and gets it done.
Yeah, okay.
But that's the motion of the CP, CP's meeting.
Okay, because we already voted to, Barbara had given us a tentative number, so.
Did it pass?
Yes. Yeah, she, the exact same number.
Google on the outbuilding.
Yeah, what fund? Because we just had it.
We did general.
The general, okay.
Yeah.
So usually when we, when it's coming just from conservation, don't you say conservation fund?
Or open space, or, you know, we usually either say open space.
Yeah, this.
Or historic or housing.
Mm-hmm.
And if not, it's general, but we try.
Yeah, because, because one Barbara gave us said open space, so we'll change the word to general.
I always thought you used conservation when it was designated that way, because open space is a little broader, right? Conservation is only conservation. Open space could be, well, at least when it comes to recreation, active or passive, so I had assumed this, this was coming from the general.
Yes.
And it is.
Yes.
Okay, yes. And you people voted five to nothing.
No, I was.
We did too. So we're on the same page? Okay, thank you. Okay, Article forty-two, emergency repairs to well number five, see if the town will vote to transfer from the water reserve fund balance, the sum of eleven thousand two hundred dollars for the purpose of covering expenses associated with emergency repairs to well number five. Or take any, go ahead.
Move to place and support Article forty-two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Article forty-three, expanding perchlorate investigation, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the water reserve fund balance, the sum of thirty-two thousand nine hundred dollars for the purpose of covering costs associated with additional required testing to determine the source of the perchlorate or take any action relative thereto.
I'll move to place and support Article forty-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Article forty-four, building inspector step increase, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of three thousand ninety-one dollars to the building inspector's salary account to provide funding for a step increase for the building inspector or take any action relative thereto.
I'll make a motion to place and support.
Second.
Okay, Mike. Okay, any discussion? I'm going to vote against this one, and I expressed my reasons when the issue first came up. So, all in favor? All opposed, four to one. Okay, Article forty-five, full-time police officer, school resource officer, to see if the town will vote from free cash, the sum of fifty-three thousand six hundred forty-three dollars to the police salary and wages account, three thousand nine hundred eleven dollars to the police overtime account, eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars to the police supplies account, and six hundred twenty dollars to the police purchase of service account for the purpose of funding the police officer SRO position and related costs or take any action relative thereto. It's a total of sixty-six thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars.
Motion to place and support?
Okay, is there a, okay, any discussion?
I just want to stress, I, I definitely support it, but I, I really, and Chief Ford gave us his assurance, I don't want to see this adversely impact the hours that were already given to Burgess, because to me, that's, you know, one step forward and two steps back. We're going to fund another one for the junior high and high school, and I know it's going to be a community approach. I just don't want to see the Burgess hours reduced as a result of us getting even another SRO.
I don't, I think you made it clear, it wasn't going to happen.
Well, he said it won't have a big impact, but he did indicate there might be times that she and whoever else is assigned with her will be spending time at other elementary schools in the region.
And those will be spending time here.
Yeah, but it might affect a little bit, and I don't want to see it.
See, I have, I have reservations until we see the whole plan. I spoke to the chief tonight, and I asked him specifically, I said, this is funding a resource officer for the junior, senior high only, and he said, yes. The other components, where that community thing is, we don't have details on that. That hasn't even been working out. I will support this for the remainder of this year, however, in next year's budget, I still feel strongly that if the school committee at Tiantaskaw wants it, they should pay for it out of their budget, or all five towns should chip in for it, my personal feeling, but.
And let me just add something. I'm very, very pleased that the chief said this is for the junior high and high school, because I firmly believe we need one at, we need representation at all three schools. And I can appreciate our chair's concern, except that, that is why we haven't had one since the grant expired in the early two thousands, when we no longer had funding. We've been going round and round with the funding, and to me, that's regionalization at its worst. If they don't want to pay, Sturbridge needs to keep that building safe, and we should pay for it.
Of course, there was also the issue too of, some of the other towns were adverse to having an officer from Sturbridge.
Correct, but it seems like you've gotten beyond that.
Well, they're still all working on it. It would be nice if by, you know, our two thousand twenty budget, that we have all the details on how this is going to work, because I feel strongly that we should not be footing the bill entirely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, Article forty-six, full-time public safety dispatcher, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of thirty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars to the police salary and wages account, eleven thousand thirty dollars to the police overtime account, five hundred dollars to the police supplies account, and two thousand five hundred seventy dollars to the police purchase of services account for the purpose of funding a public safety dispatcher and related costs or take any action in relation thereto.
Make a motion to place and support Article forty-six.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Five to nothing. Okay, Article forty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the purchase of an ambulance stretcher system, system or take any action relative thereto.
I just have a question on it.
Okay.
Is this going to give us another ambulance stretcher, or is this going to replace one that's no longer good?
It's going to give you a different type of stretcher in the second ambulance that allows you to lift it easier, as a new one that you're purchasing will have that already in it, so apparently.
Oh, now it'll bring them both up to par?
Correct, yeah, the chief, chief said it's, it's much better because it cuts down the possible injuries for the firefighters or the ambulance people were.
Oh, good, but the new one already has this type of stretcher, and this is going to be in the old one?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, while we're on that, is one of the ambulances still out being repaired?
I'm not, I'm not aware, but I can find that.
Could you check on that?
Sure.
Because it, somebody brought it up. Okay, we have a, someone willing to make a motion?
Motion to place and support Article forty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero, I almost said five to one. Article forty-eight, reserve fund, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of fifty-five thousand dollars to the reserve fund account or take any, or take any action thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to place and support Article forty-eight.
I assume it's coming from Barbara?
Yeah, if you like, I can tell you what I know. I guess apparently you have, every year you put a certain amount in, and apparently, for whatever reasons, the town has to use some of this money quicker than they normally do, so she thought it would be wise to try to replenish it at this point in time, in case there are more emergencies in the rest of the year.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Article forty-nine, appropriation of unused bond premiums, to see if the town will appropriate premium received upon the sale of bonds or notes to pay costs of one or more capital projects, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project or projects by a like amount or to take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support this article, but I do have a question about it. Usually when I, I've seen this kind of article in the past, they name specifically the project or projects that you're transferring the sale, the receipts to. And this may, I don't, again, you know, I'm sure town council wouldn't, wouldn't know, but it just seems a little bit, I, I think we had, I think a bond premium transfer to another project, it has to be a, a specific project that's like the project that the money was originally bonded for.
I believe it does too.
And.
I'll have to inquire some more.
So I don't, I don't know, I don't know if you have to name the specific project or not, but just, I'd like to see bond council's response to that question, whether we have to name a specific project.
And it's possible that, that Barbara may have said this was prepared by bond council.
Yeah.
The more I think about it, so, but I'll, I'll re, I'll double-check for the final warrant article.
Okay, I've, I've got a motion to place and support.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discuss, discussion? All in favor? Five to nothing. Okay, Article fifty, adult use marijuana zoning bylaw, chapter thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the existing chapter thirty-one, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, and inserting a new chapter thirty-one, adult use marijuana, by inserting the language below or take any action thereto. Now, I'm sure you all had time to read through it, we don't have to read through it.
We're at the hearing anyway.
Yeah.
Some of us were at the hearing.
Yeah.
I have a question.
How did we come up with the twenty percent?
By law, wasn't it by law?
That's the.
Is that, I know, is.
That's the minimum.
That is the minimum?
Yes.
So, there was a question, and I, I apologize if council came back with the answer and I missed the email. The number of licenses issued within a town of Sturbridge for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages, somebody had inquired, and Jean was going to look into it, whether that meant full package stores or also included in the amount of licenses, whether, like, those that sell only beer and wine.
Yes, I, I had.
Yeah, it's not core and license.
I had inquired.
Because there are two, we have a lot more, well, not a lot more, but we have more of one type of license and the other, and that would affect the twenty percent. So what, do we have an answer to that?
Yes.
It's my recollection that I had inquired at, when the planning board...
Oh, that was you that asked the question?
Yeah, and it came, I got an email saying that included the beer and wine licenses, the malt beverage and wine licenses.
I don't remember that.
So it's 20% of all of it.
Of all of them.
So that would, but that still would allow two establishments in town.
All alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premise, so it includes the extramats and the full package stores that we have.
I don't recall that.
Yeah, because, well...
I recall that it included those. I recall the full alcohol.
Well, because there was a debate on that. Nobody was sure. So Jean and the lady from...
Yeah, the lawyer that was there.
The lawyer. They went, and we did get the...
I don't remember getting a memo on that.
I don't either. I don't remember getting an answer.
I would like to read it.
Or went to the planning board.
Maybe it just only went to the planning board.
Might have gone just to planning.
Because I was checking my emails, and like I said, I could have missed it, but I was curious with that answer, because that, in the future, and I have voted against it, but we have voted to exceed the amount that the state has given us for licenses, because we've gone back for special legislation, like for Ocean State job law, and then we went back again for the extramart. So now, we also, when we consider that, are going to be tying in the amount of marijuana retailers we'll allow when we exceed those licenses, because this is tied to 20% of those. I'm just putting it out there, it's another added consideration.
And 20% was like, two.
Yeah.
So that's right, we did get that.
Right.
Yeah, we did get that information.
But what I'm trying to say is, we've now gone back for special legislation twice for, to exceed the amount of alcohol licenses, and every time we do that, it will affect the marijuana ones as well, so...
I don't want to make this much more amicably, but it just happened to be that today, before they closed the work, we received an email from the town council saying that, I guess you had special legislation for another license?
Yes.
It was approved.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, we voted, not unanimously, but as a board.
That's in that number.
Yeah, it's the one, um, the extramart.
Lucky mart. Yes, we've now done it twice.
Lucky mart.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too concerned about it, because 20% of the small numbers we have, it's still, still low, and, um, I know where you might just go.
We have more licenses than what the state has given us by statute, so...
Yeah, well, look at our pouring licenses. We have well more than most towns.
And twice as much as many.
Right, right, but that's not...
But it brings in business, get the meals tax.
Yeah. All people want.
That's right. Okay, so, um, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion, and, uh, I don't, I don't know, I guess the sense of the board is that they're not willing to support the article at this point, so...
Oh, I didn't say that.
Oh. Well, I'll make a motion to place and support, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah.
I don't often get to...
My only remaining, um, issue with, with the article was, I had asked if they could limit the size of retail establishments, because Sturbridge has a location where, you know, we have the largest alcohol store in New England, and I'm afraid we might end up with the largest retail marijuana establishment.
Yeah, but that, that would be all up to site plan review at the planning board.
Well, yeah.
So maybe, maybe they could...
Yeah, they, well, they...
Look for the run in that.
They said that the store size would be the maximum, you know, it could go up to the max, maximum allowed in the commercial district, so, commercial tourist district too.
Did you inquire whether we would have been allowed to, by bylaw, limit the size? Or it has to be as large as any other commercial establishment?
By zoning by law, we could if we wanted to. We do in...
We do, and, but, but did you inquire whether the marijuana law would allow it? So we could have limited by bylaw the size of it?
Oh, yeah. We can, we can limit the size of grow facilities, we can limit the, I mean...
I wasn't sure based on the statute. I didn't know that we could.
Yeah, I mean, they have different...
Well, the public hearing will be a good place for any of these questions, because they'll hopefully get input from...
But we didn't limit it in this?
No.
This, this does not limit the size of retail or any, any other marijuana establishment, you know, whether it's a grow facility or whatever.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of Article 50. Okay, three, four, all opposed. Okay, four to one.
Our last article.
I, I, I second it. Okay, and Article 52, stretch code numbering.
Fifty-one?
Did I skip 51?
Yeah.
Oh, definitions, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Priscilla.
But that's what the laws are anyways.
Yeah. Article 51, adult use marijuana zoning by law, Chapter 2, definitions, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Chapter 2, definitions, by inserting the following new definitions in their appropriate locations within Chapter 2, and further by amending the definitions for off-site medical marijuana dispensary and registered marijuana dispensary, or take any action relative thereto.
Make a motion to place and support.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, four to one. Okay, Article 52, stretch code numbering, to see if the town will vote to correct the general by law numbering of Article 32 of the June 4th, 2018, and annual town meeting from Chapter 8.60 stretch code to Chapter 8.70 stretch code, or take any action relative thereto.
I move to, to accept, yeah, to place and support Article 52.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Go ahead. Doesn't matter.
I already wrote Mary.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five to nothing. Okay, and then we have a new Article 53, free cash transfer, senior center flooring, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,042 for the purpose of replacing the flooring on the second floor in the large meeting space of the senior center, including related costs, or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support Article, was it 53?
Three. Zero second.
Second.
Okay, Chase, any discussion?
I, this is the additional cost for, for the flooring, because the town meeting already approved some, some money for the flooring, I think.
Apparently, yeah, apparently there wasn't enough. Once they started getting quotes, it was inadequate, inadequate to do the job, leave the right way.
So...
Unfortunately.
So this is how much more we need to do it right.
Finish it.
Yeah.
This is how much more from the quotes.
Can't have a half floor?
Yeah.
Three quarter.
No.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to one. Okay, is there a motion then to close the warrant for the special town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, let me just get that down. Okay. Is there a motion to sign and post the warrant pending town council's approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and after the meeting...
Page assigned, right?
Yeah, we do have the things to sign.
I have a blank copy.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Don't they, don't they need original signatures on all copies, though?
I don't know.
That's what we've done in the past.
Well, the one that comes up from the town clerk, she usually gives us separate ones for each posting.
We can have some more made, and as we come back.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's...
You know, we don't know how many, how many, is the town clerk know? I bet she must know.
She knows, yeah, it's no more than four or five, because town hall, library...
Okay, well, we have one tonight, but we'll have some additional one.
Yeah, and we have time, it doesn't have to be posted till 15th, so we have time to come in and put our original. Okay, next we have the town administrators' update. Okay, Mr. Kozak, would you like to go through your...
The first item is the pilot agreement, which was, actually was started with Leon before I, I came on board, and before Leon left, with Old Sturbridge Village for a new pilot for another 25 years. That has been finalized and signed, and returned, but unfortunately, there was, what there was, one issue came up after it was signed, about the date for when they pay the tax. Traditionally, it's been every May, and the agreement did say, I think it was September, and, and July, and they noticed that after they signed, and asked if it could be an amendment made, and this was discussed with council and the board of assessors, and an amendment's being currently finalized for changing that to the May date, that traditionally has been the date. So there will be, this has been signed and finalized, but we all see an amendment, make it May, it'd be year, not December.
December, whatever it is, yeah.
Second is in grievance notice to proceed with the Mass Department of Transportation, $15,000 to prepare a complete street project. Now, I'm glad to be new at this, but I understand this is a new project that the town has worked with, which is, which is actually a very good project, and, and you have your first allotment of funds to start this work. FEMA, we also received the 2017 assistance for firefighters program, a grant of $54,000 is awarded, to purchase new air compressor, which is a, nice, it's very nice to have received those funds for that item. And I just also wanted to note that I did have an opportunity to go to the emergency management meeting that was held last week with the fire chiefs, and the new, and emergency management coordinator, and it was, they're, they're just very excellent. I mean, I was very kind, kind of overwhelmed by how much knowledge they have, these three gentlemen, and they have done a great job. They're updating the plan that was put together five years ago. I understand, I guess you're certified, and you're, you're fully certified as a community for emergency management, and I thought it was, done very well, and really on top of it, so you're very lucky to have public safety people who have switched knowledge on this area. And the other meeting I went to was on land use division meeting, that's a monthly meeting too, and it's with the various departments, as well as the building, building department and public safety, fire department, and they'd go over the various projects, and quite a few projects going on in the community right now, as I learned from that meeting, and they do work together very well, cooperate, and I think it's very good too for the community. So it gave me a little chance to see some more about the town. I can't attend those meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, old business, Priscilla?
The locks that we talked about with Noah, with the building inspector last time, are we going to talk about those?
Uh, well, yes, but maybe after we get through the annual, the special, we'll put it on for one of the agendas, and it does have to be an executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, anything else? No?
No, that's it.
No.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. New business, Priscilla?
No.
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 Mary?
No.
I just have our annual proclamation to the town of Stowbridge. Whereas Rotary Clubs of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Stowbridge, England have united to promote a bond of friendship between the two clubs, and whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Stowbridge, England have joined together in cultural exchanges in attempt to further the bond of friendship and understanding, and whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts are proud of the sister city relationship and grateful that it continues to grow and develop, and whereas we welcome all opportunities to extend our gratitude to the people of Stowbridge, England. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Sturbridge and the Board of Selectmen wishes to extend, extend special greetings and desires for good health, peace, and prosperity to the people of Stowbridge, England. Okay, is there a motion to sign the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and we will be getting their proclamation, and they actually have Skype for the meeting in Stowbridge on October 10th lunchtime, so I have to get up early. It's not lunchtime here.
All right.
Okay, thank you. We've been doing this, it's going to be 25 years, if not longer.
Where is the Skype, is everybody meeting for, for that?
Well, Klaus...
At the Rotary?
No, Klaus Hotfeld does it out at his house.
Okay.
He invites the chairman every year to go, and just, just as a presence. But if I can't go, would you like to go?
Well, you can go.
But if something comes up?
Well, if something comes up, I would...
Mary and Priscilla need to sign it, because Klaus is picking it up tomorrow. Okay, next on the agenda, we have correspondence.
I got it. I'm done.
Correspondence dated September 13th from Charter Communications regarding upcoming changes to the channel lineup. September 13th from the Mass Municipal Association, the MUN Energy Programs Fall 2018 Breakfast Series. September 17th, petition for determination of effective competition, a notification from the Federal Communications Commission regarding the petition between Charter and DirecTV. September 28th, I'm sorry, September 18th, fine hearing notice for La Quinta Inn and Suites, notification from the Office of Public Safety and Inspections regarding an Accretural Access Board regarding a fine hearing notice sent to the inn. September 18th, the Worcester County Selectmen's Association, an invitation to a meeting on Thursday, September 20th, at Leestertown Hall. September 19th, National Grid update, Columbia Gas Incident, a letter from National Grid regarding the recent gas-related incidents in the Merrimack Valley. September 19th, Jewel Environmental Corporation, permanent solution statement from the Jewel Environmental Corporation regarding the Sturbridge disposal site. September 19th, Cabot Risk Strategies, an invitation to an injured-on-duty workshop through Cabot Risk. On November 1st and September 20th, Department of Environmental Protection, notification regarding completion, the permanent solution statement for the Sturbridge disposal site.
Okay, does anyone else have any other correspondence?
I had a question about the, in, in the packet regarding charter. We had a hearing before the Federal Communications Commission, and that was supposed to be, they're talking about the charter is, is requesting that, that because of DirecTV Now, AT&amp;T, they're no longer a, they're, they're no longer restricted to, as far as the rates go and so forth? I'm a little concerned about that. Could we get more information about what that's all about?
Yeah, it's on the last page. Charter requests that the commission grant the petition for determination of effective competition, and find that charter is no longer subject to rate regulation in the franchise areas.
Commander.
Okay. Okay, next we have minutes, we have the minutes of September 12th. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to...
Oh, wait a minute. That's okay. Janelle, I thought I sent it in to you, but maybe I didn't, or I sent to, on page three, vote to appoint Board of Selectmen member, the, in the discussion, the third line down, right in the middle, that line begins submitted applications for search committee. Instead it is, it should be it, has always been voted on.
Okay, I'll change that.
Nope, that's it. I thought that's the one I sent, but I guess not. Okay, go ahead, Mike, then.
Boy, I missed that one.
It's because you didn't teach third grade?
Boy, that was a hard one to find, Mary. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, the minutes of September 17th. Anyone have anything?
I already gave my changes. Thank you for making them.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 17th as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, as usual, there's no public, so...
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to one.